Okay, at 6:30 in the clock. We've got all the meetings ordered. This evening, all board members are present. 3.0 is the open forum. We do not receive any requests to the public comments this evening. 4.0 is the approval of the agenda. So I would add one thing under the 18 other business. We'll have a discussion and then a motion if so. Desire to direct Superintendent Lemka to go forward with the strategic planning process. So that's under 18. Anything else for tonight? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion of that addition. The motion by Scott. Seconded by Shannon. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. 5.0 is the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. Are there any changes, additions, substitutions to the minutes? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion by Matt. Seconded by Shannon. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all was in favor? Aye. Closed. Motion carries. 6.0 is honors and recognitions for the month.
Student Council.
Oh, Student Council, sorry. Student Council.
We're here this time. We just finished wrapping up our snow days coordination and now we've got the rest of the week with our dress up days and dress readings. That's all we've got.
All right, very good. Any questions on that? All right, thank you. All right, now onto honors and recognitions for the month.
Now, we have a few to recognize. I'd first like to call up Broderick Peterman and Sadie Hafter. So Broderick and Sadie have been chosen as our AAA award winners from our district. That stands for academics, arts, and activities, yes. And athletics, arts, and then...
I think they were first, athletics.
Thank you. So what happens is they are nominated on behalf of our district and so they are representatives that we've nominated onto the state. And thank you very much for representing our school district so well. Congratulations. And then Callie Khan. So Callie is our school district's Excel Award winner, recognizing students for excellence in community, education, and leadership. And if you look on for all these students, if you look in the exhibits, there's a full description of all the things these students did to earn these honors. So again, Callie is our representative who is being sent out to the state level and represents our school. So thank you very much and congratulations. And score 30 points, please. Thank you, guys. And then we had a number of students. I don't know if any of these students are able to be here tonight, but the following students, so for the Mervin Milk Conference...
Oh, brother.
Oh, there you go. So for the Mervin Milk Conference, we had student volunteers who were in our building, some of them from NHS or other organizations, but they basically were placed strategically around the building just to be a help to people because we have 600 people who aren't necessarily familiar with our building. And not only did these students do a good job, but I was present around the building and numerous times heard students and actually heard you specifically more than once reach out to people and just walk up and just say, "Hey, can I help you find something? Is there something I can help you with?" Or whatever. And we had more comments at the end of it, positive comments about all parts of the conference, but a number of comments about the students who were helping to show people around and make sure that we were showing good hospitality. So for going above and beyond, we wanted to recognize the following students, and they are listed in your program, but Morgan Hansen, Micaiah Boost, Christian Milbrandt, Gertie Sieg, Kinson Coney, Malloy Halverson, Elena Combs, Addison Rankins, Broderick Peterman, Hannah Boy, Rolia Amanas, and Scarlett Traeger were the students. And I just want to say thank you because one of the things I've said to students before is, you know, this is your school too. They don't create schools so that superintendents can have a job. They're creating for you guys, but anytime our students represent our school the way that you guys did, it's a positive thing for all of us. So thank you very much. And I'll give you a few years here. All right, so it isn't so quiet, you could do a round of applause, too.
All right, we'll move on to eight, which is the live update with Zach.
Yeah, hey, everybody. Don't have anything crazy to come up that you guys on tonight, so we'll keep it pretty brief. I'll start with activities first. Obviously, end of February or early March coming to the end of kind of all of our activities. Every single activity we offer will be heading into kind of postseason play come end of this, or sorry, in February, in March. Like Mr. Lemka said, awards and recognition, kind of the two AAA awards for Brody and Sadie. That was something that myself and some other employees here at school kind of worked with to nominate those two for those awards, and then same with Callie on her Excel Award as well. So that was something that we've been working on and obviously very proud to nominate those students that applied for those awards. Spring activities, working on meeting with our spring coaches and that sort of thing right now, going over schedules, needs, that sort of thing, and then working on schedules for next year. So it's kind of a brief rundown on activities. Community Ed. We're kind of in that transition now from our winter offerings to our late winter, early spring offerings. Had a lot of different kids participate in things this winter, such as youth basketball, traveling basketball, youth wrestling, swimming lessons, taekwondo, things of that nature. Adult classes that we offer, pickleball, adult basketball, taekwondo, and swimming as well. Preschool ECFD, little update on that. So we have set our dates for screenings in Appleton and Madison for preschool screening this spring. March 11th, it'll be in Appleton, and March 13th, we'll have that in Madison. So that's something that Andrew and I in our offices have been working on preparing. Kind of going back to those offerings of classes that I talked about, we'll be sending out our spring newsletter on Wednesday for different offerings for Community Ed. Little daycare update for you guys. So we've been having some successful meetings with our kind of community group in Madison for the daycare, Mr. Lemka, myself, Miranda Evenson, our daycare director, as well as some of the other community members that kind of have been in it from the start. We've met two, three times, I want to say, and kind of just gone over what's our plan going to be to help secure funding financially for the daycare. We kind of have a plan in place. We have secured a account within the Madison Community Foundation where businesses, area leaders, people can kind of donate money to that, and that can kind of be our fund to help, you know, maybe we need a little extra help at the end of fiscal year with the daycare. We don't necessarily know at this time the amount yet that we will have for the end of this fiscal year, but we are meeting on Wednesday with that group to kind of talk about kind of more the value of what we expect to be donated there. So it's a little update on daycare. Facility use, last board meeting, you guys recommend or approved $150 increase for those facility use spots. Pretty much everybody, and if not more, people have been renewing those. So obviously, we've been busy with that, too, and kind of getting those going and letting people use our facilities again. So yeah, that's kind of all I have for you guys tonight, unless you have any questions.
Questions for Zach?
I'll get back to the basketball games.
The only thing I'd say is that quite a few people mentioned like the different things that you were at in Marshall. It was nice seeing you there, you know, on weekends and everything. So appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Zach.
Thanks, Zach.
All right, 9.0 is the Revolution to Accept Your Gifts Federation Congrats for the month. We thank those individuals and organizations for their generous donations this month.
I'll make a motion.
Take a motion by Shannon.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor? Aye. Closed. Motion carries. 10.0 is the consent agenda. You see those resignations on the top there? We approve of the seniority list and then the substitute pay rates, and then except for trying to get rid of a six- per minute electric bill.
I think they were going to maybe change those pay rates, weren't you? Because those, these are the old ones that are in there.
No, we did update them.
Nope. These are the old ones. I don't have those and didn't have the new numbers.
Okay. I'll go back with Sue then and verify, but she and I did them together, so if they didn't make it here, I can get them to the next meeting. Talking with the cardiologist, I thought we had them already in there.
All right, so we'll table the substitute pay rates, but we'll include the rest.
Yeah.
So I have a motion on everything except for the substitute pay rates.
Make a motion.
Shannon?
I'll second.
Seconded by Matt. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor? Aye. Closed. 11.0 is the monthly financials.
So each January, we take a little bit deeper look into enrollment. You see that in your agenda packet on page 42 and 43. I did print, it was a little bit dark in the packet, so I did print a colored copy for you. It should be in front of you on the table there. If you want to first look at page 42, it's the student serve, can you find it? Student serve summary on page 42. Basically, that gives you a look at where we've been, where we're at, and where we're looking to be as far as what we know right now. K through 12 is on the far left showing each grade level. Does not include voluntary pre-K or EC, those are part-time kids. We do not include them in the total, so don't distort some of those numbers, the totals. First nine columns are final, and these are head count. So when you look at the final numbers, for example, if a student was here for exactly half the year, they would get a 1.5. If they're here the entire year, they would be a 1.0. So that's what the final numbers represent. The orange column in the middle, that is where we were at as of December 31st. You see the total K-12 is at K-06. That's quite a significant drop from what you've seen the past couple of months. We had started the year at K-32, so we're down about 26 kids as of right now. On the far right, those are projections as far as where, given the assumptions of moving each student forward at 100%, giving an estimate out there for kindergarten, we're using 60 for next school year, 25, 26 school year, and then putting out there 57 each school year thereafter. 60 potentially is a conservative number, but at this point in time with declining enrollment, we really didn't dare increase that too much more. We'll know a little bit more once preschool, or once kindergarten Ranga happens this spring, and then of course, we won't know for sure until first day of school, but we'll have a much better idea after kindergarten Ranga. The bottom, you see the totals, and the next row below that shows the change from the prior year. So you can see the increases and decreases, looking just at those K through 12 class totals. We did estimate for this school year a pretty significant increase. You can see here, it shows 27. We had projected back in June that we'd be sitting at about 800. We're currently at K-06 as of December 31st. Our budget, however, did reflect the increase that we were showing this fall, so the budget does reflect 820. The, any questions on that head count? You want to turn it over? And the other page, so always converting each of those classes, each of those grades into people units. So of course, the 7 through 12 kids get a little bit higher weighting factor. They're a 1.2 versus a 1.0. That is reflected in the people unit numbers, and also the people unit numbers reflect our part-time kids, our voluntary pre-K, our EC, and then also our tuition kids that we do, that are our residents. We get funding for them because the intern have to pay a tuition bill for those kids. So again, columns to the left are final. The orange column in the middle would be reflective of the students that we have on that page 42, and then the columns to the right are projected based on, again, those same projected enrollment numbers that we had on page 42. The, I did forget to mention the, on grade 12, we did remove one student in grade 12 to reflect any online learners or PSBO students that we could lose in those upper grade levels, but we've only used it by one. Any questions? Basically, just to use it for a planning tool, it is really nice to look at the final numbers and compare it to where we're sitting right now and kind of see which grades have gained and which grades have lost. But again, the columns to the right, we will be using for future planning. Of course, enrollment is a very fluctuating number, so this is what we're seeing as of right now and using December 31st numbers, but it changes every day, each month. So basically, I'll redone it, but gives us a good idea of what we're facing in the future. Couple other real quick comments in your agenda packet. The bill listing, the check listings that you've seen there look a little bit different than what you've seen in the past. We did have an upgrade on our system, and it deactivated some items unintentionally, I believe, so we're hoping that that will get fixed in the next upgrade so that we'll have our normal reports that we'll be able to put in the packet. And as all of you probably know, we are in session, legislative session, so we will be watching that very closely. You should be getting some updates, I believe, from our MRA and some of your other organizations, so please be watching those. The last we heard as far as forecasts at the state level is they are looking at a shortfall in the future, but right now, we're waiting for the February forecast to come out, and that will be what the governor will base his proposal and budget on. So we're hoping that it looks a little bit better than what it had the last forecast that we checked in November. So that's all I have on this. There's questions?
Questions for Brandon? Thank you, Miranda.
Corey. If we may, Scott Swatzky, I did ask him to attend tonight to talk about the cell phone policy, and he's in a break in between when the dollar plays and when she goes back out to play again, so I told him if possible, we try to do that while he's here, if that's okay.
All right, so we'll move to 15.0. Scott?
The, on page 56 and 57, you'll notice the, both the policy wording as well as the handbook wording for the cell phone policy that we've been talking about. And there's a lot of similarities in terms of how the policy has been for a few different years here. Some of the changes really are just the consequence flow chart, if you will, or if students would have infractions on this. We've had a few different meetings with staff, primarily 7-12 staff, just to make sure that whatever we present to you is something that we as a staff are comfortable with being married to for a long time. So you know, ultimately, it's in your hands, of course, but this is something that I think as a 7-12 staff, we feel very comfortable with. I think the plan follows the survey results that we received back from parents, primarily from parents and staff. Our students' feedback was maybe a little bit more skewed in terms of what they would like to see with cell phones, as we've talked about. But yeah, if you've had a chance to read through them, curious on your thoughts, sir.
Does instructional time include study vault?
Yeah. Yep. Yep. So basically, what this plan would say is our students would be allowed to have their phones at breakfast in the morning, and then once they hit advisory, all of that is instructional time. So they can have them at breakfast, passing time, and lunch.
Any other questions, comments?
One question, from like, from first offense to second offense. So the first one says just to staff members, I'm assuming like a teacher.
Correct.
So is it going to be just out for that class, or is that teacher going to keep it for the rest of the year?
So we've talked a little bit about that in terms of, you know, how to go from there. I'll be honest with you, I feel like this is very much a classroom management piece, and so in many of our cases, I don't think, my experience has been cell phones are not an issue in several of our classes because students know that's not acceptable. So the big key here is going to make sure that everybody's following this policy, being very locked into what the language says. So the answer would be yes, it would be kind of a per-class deal. I often hear about some things, not always, but often will hear if there becomes a habitual field for students, so.
Okay. Thank you. Yep.
So just to clarify. If I were to violate this first hour, second hour comes, I get it back from the teacher to take the second hour?
Not that day, no. So...
For the next.
If you violate it, for the next, correct. If you violate it, that teacher will have it for the remainder of the day. You can come get it back at the end of the day. You need to bring it back in for the next day. So it's a 24-plus hour deal, if you will, which is really what we have right now.
So what if they refuse to do it?
At the bottom there, then it's in-school suspension, one to three days of in-school suspension.
Okay, any other questions, comments? I'll take, within any amendments or anything, I'll take a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Make a motion by Shannon.
I'll second.
Seconded by Matt. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor? Aye. Closed. Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, now back to, hey, it's bills and claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the January 25 board bill for $240,808.89, December 24 manual check for $47,192.17, January 25 construction bills for $621,747.37, for a grand total of
Okay, we got a motion by Scott.
I'll second.
Seconded by Shannon. Any discussion on bills or claims? Hearing none, all was in favor? Aye. Closed. Motion carries. 13.0 is the pay equity report. So Scott, you want to walk this through, Doc?
Yes, the state Minnesota requires school districts to submit a pay equity report every three years, and so we're on that third year now where we have to resubmit that. And what happens is the board is asked to review it and basically give us permission to go ahead and share it with the state, and then the state reviews it. If they have any requested revisions or anything, they can contact us back where they can just let us know that it's accepted and good. So this is every three-year thing that we have to submit. And it just ensures that school districts have equity and pay for all their employees and whatever class they might be.
If there are any questions, then I'll take a motion to approve. Motion by Scott.
Second.
Seconded by Shannon. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor? Aye. Closed. Motion carries. This is something we do each year. It doesn't mean that we are making cuts or we have to make cuts, but if we do, we will be directing Lemka and team to look at the numbers and see if there are cuts that are needed or if we stay status quo. So all this is doing is giving them the authority to look at the books and make sure we can continue another year without any big financial problems. I'll take a motion to approve. Motion by Danny.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kent. Any further discussion on this piece? Hearing none, all was in favor? Aye. Closed. Motion carries. All right, 16.0 is the RDC, so they have, or they would like to have, a member of the school board join their board. So if you are so inclined and want to do that, we have the form in here, denomination form, et cetera. So it follows the term that you are on with your school board term. If you've got two years left, it'll be two years, and just got on, it's four years, et So that's just information on that. So if you're so inclined, that's your part. All right, monthly reports. You'll see Robins and Tony's within the packet here. We heard from Zach Live tonight. Scott, you can read in the packet. Maureen, anything you want to highlight?
Just that access testing is starting, and the EL team has really put a lot of time into configuring ways in which students can be most successful, and I know Hope did talk a little bit about that, but all students will be doing their access testing right within their EL classroom, which will be a smaller environment, a little more focused for them. So that'll be really, that's a nice change that we've made. Other than that, REDAC continues to evolve and change, and so we're keeping up with that and doing our best, and looking forward to legislative session ending and finding out what changes will come from that.
Heidi, any speeches you want to give?
Me.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Lemka.
Just a couple of things to share with the board as a whole. We met last week as sure we would, Scott Khan joined, Scott Swatzky, and Paul Lowry, myself, and we had, I don't know, like, an hour, hour and a half discussion. Paul, thankfully, you know, he provided a number of different kind of options and scenarios for us to consider, but what we were doing is looking at our middle high school schedule just to see if there are ways that we can offer more options, more flexibility, and then what would that entail? And going back to what I believe was Corey said earlier, also trying to have an eye for having multiple different career pathways. So if your thing is college, you have a pathway that can take you there. If your thing is another area or trade, we have options that students can get into that career pathway. And so we came away with a few what you might call do-outs or things that we're going to move forward on, and one of them is we looked at adding the potential of next year, and this is something that we'll have to look at as we're doing budgeting for staffing process, but the possibility of adding more overloads to a couple of staff members who are willing to do so. Overloads are probably one of the more cost-effective ways we can increase the classes that we're able to offer. It essentially means that the teacher agrees to receive extra pay, to teach an extra period instead of teaching, or instead of covering an advisory. And there are a couple people who have expressed that they're willing to do that in course areas where we really could use a second offering of that course, so if a student is a band or orchestra, they don't lose out on the opportunity to take that class. And then other things that we're going to look at and consider would also be if we can find and hire, you know, other areas that we don't currently offer, like say art classes. You know, we haven't had really a plethora of art classes lately. I think that's something that would open our schedule up a little more, too. And so what we committed to is that as we go through getting ready for the staffing process and budgeting for the next process and budgeting for the next school year, then I would report back to the board at some point as far as what costing those things out. If we were to do some of these options to, to help our schedule, what's the cost to the district, and then we can weigh, is that, is that worth, you know, what we're getting for it? So I just wanted to update the board on that, and does anybody have any questions on that process, that, that conversation? If you do, you can talk to Scott or talk to myself, but it was, I thought it was a productive Something I was just going to make the board aware of was that also that we're looking into, Maureen and I are working on an application for what's called access funding. It's a, it's an option that allows districts to provide additional intervention support, and then the state pays you back. It's approximately 60% of the cost of that staff member at the end of the year, or like I should really probably more accurately, the beginning of the next year, but they, they give that money back to you. But there are some unknowns right now, we're in the process of, of, again, as Brenda mentioned earlier, compensatory education funding is, is still very much in flux, and because we have to put up our money upfront for this, that's, we're going to continue to look into that to, to make sure that, first of all, that financially, we feel like we're in a place where we can add those positions and pay that 40%, but also just, so also to make sure that, that if, if we find that from a budget standpoint, we're not in a place to move forward, that, that we can back away from it. So I just wanted the board to know we're going through that process and we'll keep you updated, but it would be nice if we're able to do it because it would provide additional staffing and would cover the majority of the cost for it, so. And I think those were the big pieces this time. We're starting the capital expenditures process, which is basically a process where each of the building leaders are going to go to their staffs to try to determine what our capital needs we have. Capital needs tend to be big-ticket items that are, you know, typically a thousand dollars or more. It could be furniture, it can be, you know, it can be a device, it can be different things. And then what we do is we come together as a leadership team, and we go through our, our budget that we've predetermined, and we determine what are the things we're going to prove this year, what are the things we might put into a different budget, or say we can't do it this year, we'll have to look at it in the future years. So that process will be starting here very soon.
And that's all I have. All right, we'll move to 18.0, which is the strategic planning, so we had that meeting at 5:30 tonight. So it would be appropriate that if we want to continue with MIRVAD, that we have a formal motion and approval to go forward with that process.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion by Scott. Second by Kent. Any further discussion? Very none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Hosts. Motion carries. Anything else for this evening? Very none, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Kahn and Dankie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hosts. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
We'll take photo.